All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to this special workshop session on Tuesday, February the 2nd, 2020. At this time, it is 6:30. And this workshop tonight was requested by Councilman Robertson and Councilmember Stockdick. Ms. McGrew, will you call the role, please ma'am?
Yes, sir, Mayor Bill Hastings. Mayor Pro Tim Chris Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Janet Court.
Here.
Councilmember Rory Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jennifer Stockdick.
Here.
Councilmember Dusty Theo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. McGrew. Tonight, we will have Chris Harris, who will offer our invocation, followed by Dusty Theo, who will lead us in our US flag, our US pledge and our Texas pledge.
Dear lovingly, heavenly Father, we come to gathering asking for your benevolence as the issue for us. For God's better hands, that clears how can doctor cell and her to join. You, you, the expression clock, it will be arms, by struggle work.
Thank you, Chris. Yes, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Now join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. We have a presentation that will be given by Chief Noe Diaz with County Police Department. But I'd like to just say one thing to everybody to begin with is that on Zoom, you know, we've all done it enough, we're fairly familiar with it, but we also realize that it's easy to talk over people. So if you would kind of take your turn and make sure whoever is speaking is finished and then, but let's just slow down a little bit and not all be so eager to jump in and talk over each other. So with that, Chief Diaz, we're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Jess. Okay, first, let me thank everybody, everyone on council, the city administrator, Mayor Hastings. This has been a very learning experience for us here at the PD. We're grateful for the opportunity to visit about the animal shelter and we're excited about the, the, the new expectations and the processes that we're doing. So this is just a small overview, things that we've been doing for a while. This is, as you all know, we went through COVID recently and when the city administrator came to us and asked that we cut our budgets because of unforeseen circumstances later on in 2020, you know, the, the city administrator, Mr. A Bear was very adamant, as was mayor, that we do not touch the animal shelter. So the animal shelter didn't get a cut like everyone else in the departments did. So we've been slowly growing it. That's vehicle that we just purchased, about $30,000 purchase with a new vehicle for the animal control shelter. You can go Jess next. So as you get, and just giving you a history for people that have never been out there. So the old shelter was in the same location, built in the early eighties. This facility did not have power. In 2006, the new animal shelter was built. Since this time, David Brown has been the animal control officer. In 2011, with the city growing, there was an additional officer hired. From this time forward, part-time employees have been used to help cover after hours, weekend shelter help, et cetera. In 2017, dealt a devastating blow to the animal shelter as it did so many with Hurricane Harvey, the shelter had about 14 inches of water run through it and it got rusted out. In 2018, again, the city administrator was very positive towards building a new facility, making it look clean. They rebuilt it, they remodeled, they added additional space for cats and a separation wall between dogs and cats and they elevated the ceilings. Office space was increased from a work, from one workstation to four workstations. Those of you that have visited, y'all have seen that shelter. So this, this is kind of what it looks like. We're going to try to work an image or footage for people that have never visited our, our shelter. It's ready, whenever you're ready, Jess. So this is a drone image that we flew through the shelter, so you can see what it looks That's coming in through the entrance. Kind of gives people perspective of what, what we have to work with. Again, so the, the shelter is designated mainly for dogs. We have a very small section. As you go through the walls, as you turn through it, those are kennels, there are empty kennels on each side and the, the space is limited out, you know, that, that's how it looks now. This was taken a few days ago. Recently, our partners at Amazon, you'll see dog food, the refrigerators are full of dog food, Amazon donated an entire year worth of food to the shelter. And we were fortunate enough to accept it and we were able to give it, pay it forward to some of the 14, the 501(c)(3)'s that we actually use to adopt the animals out. So that's kind of the Sallyport, that's the back part of the, the, the facility, kind of gives you an overview, it's a fenced in area. Those repairs on the bottom were just done because it was rusted because of the flooding during. So again, that's, those are images of the shelter, that's how, that's how it's put together. You have your dog, your, your, your dog runs are in the middle to clean it, everything gets filtered outside. That's, that's the cat room that we, that they established. It's a probably a four by eight space and it's got cages on each side. And it's still in good shape, David and Spencer have done a phenomenal job keeping up with the facility. Through Harvey or through COVID, we've installed new chemicals, new chemical dispensers, because unfortunately, we haven't had an instance yet, but pets, cats and dogs can carry the COVID disease. So those were the kinds of things that we put in place for David and Spencer to not, 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 not catch any illnesses like that. New chemicals, new, new, new dispensers to, to, to show us the chemicals. Or to just dispense the chemicals, forgive me. It's about approximately 3,000 square foot building and that's, it's, it's functional. As you all know, it's near our sewer plant. Okay, Jess, you can go forward. Those were the backup, just in case the video didn't work. So the, the same images, you can go to the next one, Jess. So this is current training that we have. David and Spencer have been there, it's, it's, it's a, it's a long list, continuing education. Each employee that we have have to have the requirements by the state and David and Spencer have been through all the training, I mean, they've been through all these trainings. In 2017 was the last time they went to training because of COVID. In 2020, the governor, by executive order, canceled all the state mandated trainings. So we are scheduled and we've been rescheduled. The kennel is doing such a great job that the state has chosen our facility to have the training in 2020. I think that's coming in June, we're going to have it at the VFW hall. So all the kennel persons that are interested in the business are going to come use our kennel and our city to do the train, to do the training. You can go to the next one. These are service calls, 2019, 2020, remember, a lot of the records were washed away during Harvey. 2019, those are total calls, those are wildlife calls, wildlives, could be anything, picking up dead animals on a roadway, trapped wildlife, livestock, snakes, and any other kind of domestic animals. In 2019, we had 224 animals to the shelter. In 2020, we've had 210 animals to the shelter. Next. So those are the animals that are handled at the shelter in 2019, cats and dogs, 80% of the animals sent or reunited at their homes, sent to rescues. And it kind of gives you the chart of, you know, euthanized, adopted, returned to owner and other. Next. 2020, we had a better year, adopted, returned to owner, other, 88% of the animals. And it's a little higher, but you know, we're going through records, so 88% is pretty good. It's, it's, it's around 90%. So we've had, recently, we had Dr. White from the Harris County Shelter. Dr. White sits on the veterinary board at the state level and he came through their facility and gave us a thumbs up and was very happy with what we're doing, what we have there at the facility, our numbers. So he was, he even offered to cross-train some of our guys throughout the year at no cost to the city. So David and Spencer will actually go to the Harris County Facility to cross-train so they can, you know, just learn different, different techniques from a giant facility and come back and bring what, what is applicable to us. Next one. So this is, this is a number that we need to work on. In 2019, there was only 113 animal licenses. In 2020, it was 114. So again, this is something that we have to work on as a community to make sure that we're getting our animals registered and so when they get lost and they get loose, they're easily returned because there's a registration in place. Next one. Animal complaints requiring police responses. In 2019, there was 18 dog bites. In 2020, and forgive me, it may be cat as well, so in 2020, there were 21 bites. Number of citations, in 2019, there were 70. This is citations issued by the animal control staff. In 2020, there was less because, because of COVID, we asked that our staff not interact as much with, with, with the population here in the community to avoid exposure to them and for us as well. Next. So contrary to what people think, we, we actually have about 20 501(c)(3)'s that we use daily. These are just, that's just a snapshot of them. And when we adopt out to these facilities, we send a donation of $25 per animal to that shelter. We still, we've had a couple of success stories recently. I know you guys have seen the, the little red pit bull that was in there. It was in there since December the 18th. And it left for Nebraska Monday morning at 5:00 AM. The Brindle Pit Bull that was in there as well had been in there since around Christmas. And it is already promised to a shelter to be adopted out. So I know during all this, the mayor was gracious enough to extend the time to seven days, but it's a very common occurrence. So when we have incidents where, we've had an incident, an instance where we had someone have a tragic accident on the interstate, they were away from home, we kept their animal at no cost to them for a couple of months. We've had people that unfortunately get in trouble with the police department and they, they, they go and we will not release the, the animal unless we get permission from that person and we've kept them in there to feed them. When we have the space, it is absolutely imperative to us here that we treat the animals with dignity and we have, actually have a facility that, that's concentrated on the health and the wellness of the animals. So next. Again, there, I mean, there's a plethora and all these have been vetted, just because people come in and say we're a 501(c)(3), we make sure that we vet them. We had some cats recently, we had some ladies come and look at our cats and we vetted them with the kennel in La Porte and those cats found a new home in La Porte, right, through another 501(c)(3). And each cat, again, had a $25 donation attached to it and, you know, the 501(c)(3) was so happy that we actually sent a little bit. And some of those, the most recent adoptions that we had actually took giant bags of food because Amazon was so grace, gracious in giving us all that food. Next. So this is what we've been working on for several months. You know, we've been following the state guidelines forever. They're not as detailed as I'd like them. So we're changing from the following, the, the, the state guidelines, which is a giant book and it's kind of very gray, to actually having a standardized operating procedure that mirrors that of Harris County. So it'll, it'll go from, 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 from this state book that we've always, to an actual animal control manual that's going to go line by line, as long as it is something that we can use that's effective to us. So it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the, the revision phase of it. We've also implemented with a care, with, with Dr. Hicks at Old Town, Katie Bet, a euthanasia policy. We've, we've, we've come up with a form for handling animals with care and we've actually come up with 13 guidelines, which is a mirrored to Harris County's, it's a compassionate care guideline. So those documents are already, they're, they're in the process of putting together, like I said earlier, the animals by, by city ordinance were kept 72 hours and that was always just the minimum. And animals now are kept for seven days. And then animal disposal was kept in cold storage, again, following state guidelines. Councilmember Stockdick had a great idea and she came up with a company that we're researching and see if we can later on, once we meet as an advisory board, maybe contract them to do the, to do the disposal of the animals. Euthanasia was done by personnel before Dr. Hicks volunteered his time to come in on Fridays to oversee the animals. So he'll come in and give each animal an assessment on Fridays at no cost to the city. And based on his medical reference or his, or his medical opinion, we'll decide, because some of the, some of the animals come in injured, they come in diseased, so we're having to, to, to make the necessary decisions. Unfortunately, sometimes the animals get euthanized. So that, 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 we're working on that. The mayor was very effective in, in communicating with Dr. Hicks and like I said, he volunteered his time for it. So Dr. Hicks came last Friday and he'll be here this Friday as well. This week, we're fortunately, we don't have a lot of animals in, in the kennel, so he'll come in and see what we have and he'll check them and make sure that it's being done correctly and then we'll, we'll go through that. And finally, the advisory board, council was gracious enough to send me names of people in the community that they'd like to be on the board and I've met with two or three of them and they're very, very positive, solution oriented people from all over the city. I will send those names to the mayor and the city administrator and let them make the decision on the people. Hopefully, we'll have seven people, we'll include the vet, we'll have a veterinarian on the advisory board. I'll have Detective Salazar on the board as well. Detective Salazar, before he became a police officer, spent eight years at the Harris County Animal Shelter as, 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 as a tech there. So he's very, very versed in, in, in working in the kennels. And, you know, I hope that the board, once we decide how we do it, we'll meet a couple of times a year and go over legislative changes, things like that, just to keep up with things that are happening in the law that are going to affect our kennel. And, and just to keep growing as a community, keep growing as a, as a department, as the animal control center there. So those are the, a few of the changes that we're, that we've been working on. We, we've installed a camera at the dog park, council member Robertson and all came out, council member Court and Mr. Theo and, and council member Chris Harris came and we put it up and it's up. So that's our revision manual, that's what it's going to look like. It is a, a work in progress and we're very, it's something that we're very proud of so that anyone that comes through the community can have it and this is the policies that we're going to follow to make sure that, that, that they're wearing compliance essentially. That's the contract, we haven't decided yet, but that's Fond Memories. It is a company, I think it's out of Conroe. And those are the kinds of things that we're going to put before the board to make a decision. Again, everything costs money, so those are the kinds of things that we'll discuss and hopefully come up with a solution to be able to, if not Fond Memories, it'd be another one, to, 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 to change the way we dispose of the animals. And when I say animals, a, a lot of them are, I hate to use the word roadkill, but they're, they're raccoons, possums, armadillos, things that are normally found here in the community and those are the kinds of things that go as well. That's a program with Dr. Hicks here from Old Town Animal Hospital. He's partnered with us, again, just, just a wealth of knowledge, he's been doing it for over 40 years and he'll, he'll do a weekly inspection for us. And Dr. Hicks is who was always doing our plan anyway at the facility, because all that's required is a vet come in and have a plan yearly. So Dr. Hicks has always been communicating with David throughout, for, for years now. So he, he volunteered his services, he volunteered his, his professional opinion and I think it's going to be a great, a great partnership with him to make sure that, that we're doing the very, very best to, to move forward in a different direction with regard to the So again, that's, that's the advisory board, it'll be me, Detective Salazar, Dr. Hicks and the other members to be named. And again, those members will, those names will be sent to the mayor and the city administrator and they'll work through, through the details and it won't be a long-term thing, maybe people will switch out yearly. So they're, they're not, I hate to use the word stuck, but they're not stuck on the same meeting over and over again, meet twice a year in a group and discuss issues, different ideas, go over some of the 501(c)(3)'s that we have to research to make sure that they're the right 501(c)(3) for our community. Next, Jess. So thanks, moving forward, things, we've already purchased a, a, a more modern chip reading device that'll actually read through kennels and things like that, where animals are trapped and it'll read it about a 10-foot distance. We're reviewing our intake program at the shelter before it was, we were, we were doing it by hand. We'd have kennel cards, right now, we're currently using our police New World computer system. It's very brief what he can put in there, but going forward, kind of discussing these, the, these, these kennel programs, things like that, because, but example, we've been to Sugar Land, Sugar Land uses something called chameleon and it's, it's very costly and, but that's for a big operation. Again, on average, we have about 11 dogs or 11 cats a month. That's a rough average during puppy season or kitten season, one dog will come in with five or six puppies, so we have seven, right? So that's not always the same, the same time. So we don't have 70, 80 dogs at a time in there ever. So those are the kinds of things that, that, that we're going to work with to try to develop something maybe smaller, use the existing computer program that we have so we can better use it, so we can instantly provide reports instead of going back and looking through it manually. The manual stuff works. David can find anything he has, he's very meticulous in how he works through, through the kennel stuff. So tho- those are the things that we're doing and, and I'm discussing, I haven't actually haven't discussed it yet, but I'm working through also installing cameras at our kennel. But again, everything has a cost, you, council is well aware what that one costs, I won't repeat that, but it's effective, it's up and running and it covers our park and we've had, since it's been up there, we haven't had one dog found in there, lost, that it was dumped and we haven't had any complaints there yet. So it's, 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 we've got it as big and as obvious as we could have it, so we haven't had any complaints, we haven't had any calls for service there since the camera went up there. So we hope that continues, that's a trend and it just helps the overall city growing and moving forward. Okay, this is a rescue story, this happens every day, all year round and it's, I take responsibility for not putting on our Facebook and doing it as much as we can, but this is an animal that was in our kennel in June, it was a mama dog with, with her puppies. And, you know, if we could, we'd keep all the dogs forever, but unfortunately, we can't. This is something that I'd like, you know, people to see, this is Houston, a little Pets Alive is a very good partner with us. I think that's the last one, Jess. So that was put together by, by our partners, I mean, we, we, we work with them closely every day, David and Spencer are always on the phone trying to make sure that these, these facilities know what we have. Jess will show us our new website, Jess, if you can go to our website that we've been working on for months, because our website was a bit antiquated. So as we, as we, as we wait for it to come up, I'm, this is, I'd like to thank Jess for really just completely instrumental in putting this together. Can't thank her enough for sharing her talents with the PD in putting this together for, for the community. It's, it's, it's user friendly, it's, it gives people access immediately and it kind of opens us up to more access for, for everyone, the community, people passing through, they can see it. Hopefully, it'll be something that other communities take and, and use in their communities to, to better suit them.
Chief, we're having an issue with the whole site, I don't know if it's who we promote, but I happen.
There goes. So, so that's, that's kind of a snapshot of our new webpage, for, you know, when you click it, that's what it's going to be. So in 2019, 17 cats were adopted, seven were returned to owner, 56 dogs were adopted, 85 were returned to the owner. So those numbers will continue to grow as, as this website, so people can see it immediately. So this is 2020, 27 cats were adopted, the cats returned to the owner, 60 dogs were adopted, 70 dogs were returned to their owner. So as you go through the, through the webpage, it's more modern, it has a better, you can actually have, it's more interactive and things like that, better resource and it's easier for us to load photographs onto it as, as we gather these animals.
Chief, I can do a couple of highlights for you.
Okay, do that, please.
So once we have the 2021 numbers, David is going to do a report monthly so that I can update this and we'll show 2019, 2020, and 2021. We've added the animal cruelty hotline. This is the contact information. This is some general information about animal control. Exactly. Appointment only, some of the rules. If you're outside the city limits, we gave you some resources. If you're in the greater Katy area, here are the county shelters and then local 501(c)(3)'s that can also help you. So for pets in the shelter, we have this grid here. And it will show you current animals that are in the shelter. And then it will also show you animals that have recently been released to be adopted. You mentioned this male brindle pit. And all of these animals have been released and there's dates on these too. So you can see when they were picked up and when they were released to be adopted as well. Or released to their owner. This cat was thankfully returned to their owner.
Right.
So this is the pets in the shelter. If you go back to the homepage, you also have a link to city ordinances. So if you want more information about the laws and ordinances that pertain to animal control, you can click on this button for registration information. We have this button and it will take you here we go, to all the information and how you register your pet and why we, we have this in the city of Katy. I think that's important.
Right.
And then you can also have dog park rules. If you're going to visit the park, these are the rules. You can also contact the Parks and Recreation Department if you have questions about this as well. And then the other addition that we added was events. Animal Control does go to events to do registration and disseminate information. So that they have an upcoming event on Kane Island. You'll be able to find any information about that on this page as well. And then we also have listed all of the community partners that Animal Control partners with.
And the list grows every day as far as our community partners. So we are constantly looking. People reach out to us and we make sure that they're the correct 501(c)(3) for us to make sure that the animal is actually going to, to the right place, to the right family. And hopefully has a happy life with a new family. That's it. Can we start the discussion now?
Thank you, Chief Diaz. We'll move on to agenda item number four, which is a council discussion. This is a discussion item only.
Can I start?
Bill, do you want to direct the order? Or Councilmember Robertson's asking if he can start?
No, whoever wants to start is welcome.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I'm not pleased with it. Sorry. I thought we were going to make some positive changes. Everything I saw here was let's start with a couple of notes I took and then we'll go through it one by one, unless we want to do a round robin or something to that effect. But let me, I just like then maybe add some more questions at the end. My concern is oversight. We're sitting there, we know that the cat that started this conversation Jasper would euthanize the next day. It is strictly in the rules that all cats and animals licensed and unlicensed will be held for three days. They weren't following that. We know that. Now, with the only vet available in the city of Katy, the volunteer is a close personal friend of these guys. Hey, we know that. The advisory board, we don't know. My people weren't called. All council was invited to give names up. None of them were called. Dr. White given a glowing report. Yeah, we're seeing these videos that aren't the people. This is showing that we're not listening to the people. And one question I have is I want to know if the report is true. Do we have chloroform at the animal control facility? Councilmember, you mentioned the incident with the black cat.
Yes.
That person has come in and filed a complaint. So that is under investigation, sir. So I can't comment on it further.
Okay.
We do not have chloroform in the kennel, sir.
Okay, that's one clear. Thank you.
But like I said, I'm not, I'm not, this isn't, I was hoping we were going to move forward. I don't see this as moving forward. I see this as just a let's sugarcoat it and let's protect the current animal control officers. Okay, somebody else can go on. I'll, I'll come back if you don't mind.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm, I am super excited about the advisory board. Before the presentation, I wasn't sure if you were going to put a veterinarian on there. So I'm glad to hear that you are. I think in my mind, I'd like the number to maybe be more than four citizens.
It's going to be, so council member is going to be seven.
But when you started talking about the vet and then your person that you're going to put on it.
That's, that's three. So we're going to, we're going to include more people. There should be total of seven citizens.
Oh, seven citizens. Okay. I wrote down seven people, but okay, so that, that's a better number. So one of the things you said about this advisory board was that you only wanted them to meet a couple of times a year. And my recommendation is since we're so new to looking at the things maybe we can improve on, maybe in the beginning of this first year, maybe they need to meet once a month. And then, and then my next question is who are they reporting to? Are they going to report back to you? Are they going to report back to council?
What we'll do is we'll meet, we'll meet collectively, council member, and once they compile the information or the data that they, that they, they want to, want to discuss, I'll prepare it and then we'll send it to council so they can review it as well.
Okay. Do you think that when they do have these meetings that they are going to be public meetings? Open to the public?
That's, that's, that's an art question. Bertow? I think he's muted.
I think he's muted. Are you there? Okay. Well, my recommendation is that they be made public like all of our other boards. And then you had mentioned maybe just a one-year term, and I'm wondering if maybe they need to be longer because I think there could be a lot for someone to learn in just one year. And then if we're making that change that quickly, we might be doing ourselves an injustice.
So we're open for suggestions. Again, it's hard for people to meet. We're through COVID. So again, that, that's very fluid. We're, we're actually ready to, 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 for the challenge. You know, we want to meet with people. I've already met with two people. Councilmember Robertson, my secretary left messages to the two people you submitted. And I'll follow up with her tomorrow to make sure that the persons that you submitted get their calls and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, I'm good for right now.
Art, I show you unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay. I think the question was, will the committee's meetings be open to the public?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else has any more discussion? Janet?
Art, is this going to be? I thought there was a difference between an advisory council and then, I mean, an advisory board and then a regular city board. So can you explain that a little bit?
No, ma'am. All the boards, the boards that are, that are created, they're the boards that are created by the mayor. And then there are boards that can be created by, by council. Some of those boards have, have our advisory in nature, which is what this board would be. And then there are, there are those boards that have actual, can actually make, make to make, actually make decisions, like Board of Adjustment, P&amp;Z, they're, they're different as opposed to, to this board. This board, they're basically just a committee. We just give them the name as an advisory board. But they are one of the committees that, that the mayor has, has the authority to create.
Okay, but then their meetings, okay, because I always thought advisory boards were not necessarily public meetings.
Well, what, what, what you have done primarily and instructed me is that you want those boards to be open because you want the council members to be able to come to them. And if the council members come, if you get there, it needs to be posted if you're going to have a quorum. So if you're going to post it because you may get a quorum, you might as well just post all of them all the time and just post the meetings.
Okay, okay. I, I wasn't aware that council members were going to be attending the advisory board.
Well, what they do, what, what, since many of their council members, they, they tend to attend different board meetings that, that we have from P&amp;Z, all of that. We have council people attend.
Dusty, I think you were next.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. First, thank you, Chief Diaz for the presentation. I do appreciate it. And I did visit the animal care facility. Pretty much unannounced. I called and said I was coming over. And I just want to say it was very, looked like a very well-run, very clean facility. Just, I was really impressed with it. It wasn't what I thought I'd see. But one of the things I was just turned, are asking about is going from 72 hours to seven days of keeping the animals. If the animal appears to be domesticated, clean, you know, disease-free, is it something then that the Dr. Hicks will be looking at to extend the stay maybe to, if the people are out of town or whatever, is that, I mean, is it just a set seven days and they'll be shipped off to?
It's not, a perfect example is the red pit bull that was there since the 18th of December. If we have the space available, we, we're going to do our darndest to try and make sure that that animal finds a new home. So the seven days, the, the mayor's been here long enough, the 72 hours was just a minimum. We, we try every avenue that we can to make sure that the animal goes to the, to the, to the right home. So if it's over seven days and we have the space and the doctor comes in on Fridays and asks that, that we extended, we have no problems. I mean, if we have the space, we have the care capacity. You know, we have partners in the community that are giving us giving us the, the food and things like that. If we could, we'd keep them off forever, but unfortunately we can't. You know, we're limited to space. The only concern that I have with it, and it's a small one, where we get a big influx perhaps, and we're too full and, and you know, with the seven days, there may be some instances, we'll try to avoid that where we may have to tell the citizen that we're, we're full right now, but we'll make arrangements to, to come out a little later, things like that.
And then just one other thing. Body cams or dashboard cams or anything like that, just to protect our workers on what happens when they're with citizens. Is that something, is that, what's the feasibility of doing something?
We've discussed it. Those body cameras are very expensive. But it's something that we've discussed and that's something that I can bring up with the advisory board to at least have them have one inside the vehicle so they can, they can access it if need be. Because they do interact with a lot of people at a distance, from a distance. And sometimes, you know, it's not on, on it's on an unfavorable term if you, if you, if, if you know what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, I thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah. Ma'am.
There. Chris, your audio is not working.
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your
Chris, you have a lag that makes it
Are you able to hear now? Okay.
Try speaking again, Chris. You're frozen, but I think your voice.
All right. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, just, I just want to thank the chief for giving us this presentation. I look forward to hearing back from the committee. I, I know that there's some changes that need to be made and we need to have everything in writing and I hope the committee process is open to the public because I think this is a real good point to make some positive changes to what is happening now there. And I agree with Councilmember Thiel, I think body cameras is a worthy investment for the workers out there, just for the public, pet and the staff protection. So we can look to see what is going on out there. And I think, I think the committee at first should meet as often as possible to send back those recommendations. And then of course with the fiscal impact, so. I think, I think every department can get better and I look forward to the recommendations.
Anybody else?
Chief, who all have you brought in? Since some of these questions came out, what other agencies and stuff have you brought in to give you advice? To look at the shelter, let you know, make suggestions, that type of thing?
Well, we brought in the, tomorrow, I'll start from the very beginning. So we actually when we were made aware, we actually brought in, I brought in animal cruelty investigators from Harris and Fort Bend County to look at everything. And I've spoken to the county attorney in Fort Bend County. I've spoken to the district attorney in Fort Bend County. I have a DA investigator actively looking at our investigation. So I won't, so, so for transparency purposes. Just right before here, I had a meeting with the Fort Bend County Health Department. And they gave us a thumbs up on, on everything that we're doing. I've got the Texas Department of Environmental Quality coming to visit us. The state of Texas hasn't been able to come out because again, the governor told them not to do any inspections. That's the only inspection that we're lacking is the actual state inspection that's done yearly. So I've spoken to Gary Johnson at the state that does the region. And he's, he's waiting hopefully in March to come out. So Councilmember Thiel said it's open to anybody at any time during business hours. If anybody can come look at it, we have nothing to hide there. So those, that's just, that, those are just a few. Tomorrow DEA is coming to look at our euthanasia medications, to audit it. They do that twice a year and they're, they'll be out tomorrow morning at 10:30. So it's I see it every day. I go out there twice a week. So we're, we're, we're in compliance and we're, we're trying to get better and getting more modern and things like that as, as, as physically responsibly as we can.
One other question. I saw some stuff on Facebook about cats being held outside. Have you made any changes to that effect?
Well, it I can't comment on it, Ms. Court, because that's part of the investigation. It would be unfair to, to the investigation to comment on something like that.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Anyone else?
Just a real quick question. I'm going to be reaching out to the Rosenberg Shelter to see if I can go out there. Because like I said, I think we're still so far apart. I want to get close. I think we can. I think I have a lot of, I love what you've done with the police department so far, Chief Diaz. I think we're still far apart on this. So I'm going to say, I'm going to see if I can reach out to Rosenberg and schedule a meeting for anybody who wants to join me. Council, Chief Diaz, I know you've done it, but
I'll send you, I'll send you the, the administrator's cell number tomorrow morning. And you can go directly, but theirs is a little different. You'll see that we've been to Sugarlands. They're just huge operations.
And Sugarland like has some of the same problems we were dealing with. And Rosenberg, like I said, it's a larger facility. So we're, you know, we're, I think we're such a small facility. And we're dealing with, I think the numbers might have been a little conservative, 224 and 210. And that's really manageable to achieve the goals that I'm looking for. And I think that the people, I've spent the last three weeks talking over and over and over to 50, 100 people personally. And I know which direction the public, people that elected me to represent them want to go.
Yes, sir.
And so I think, I think, like I said, I want to invite anybody to come with us. You know, like I said, Rosenberg is probably the top facility in the area right now. And I think that's what we need to emulate. And I have some goals. You have some goals. Everyone has goals here. But I think we need to really work together, the council, come together, work with the chief, the mayor, and get this done and make like it, one more thing. When we talk about these ideas, they're budget neutral and even budget saving. This is not something that's going to cost the city a tremendous amount of money. And so there, there's ways around this or volunteers. And I want to see this something that we can be proud of. I'm an animal lover. I want to be proud of our animal control department. Just like I am for the police department, just like I Just like I am for the police department, just like I am with the fire department. I love all those departments and what they represent our city. And I want the animal control department to be there. And I don't think we're there right now. And so like I said, let's, let's work together. I'm, I'm I'm excited about that. But like I said, I want to get something going good.
Yes, sir. I agree a hundred percent. We actually had our first volunteer on Saturday.
Good. Great step. Thank you, Chief.
First step, we're moving forward and, uh, you know, again, uh, we're, 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 it's, it's a positive direction and that's, that we all want that.
Thank you.
Councilmember, if, if I may, uh, when, when you're pulling together your, your schedule, can you please get with, get with Becky to make sure that we can post it for a possible quorum?
Thank you for that, Art. Thanks for that reminder as always.
I, I have another question. One idea that I've heard kicked around. And I'm not, I'm just putting it out there. I'm not saying I'm in agreement with it or whatever, but it's another idea. Um, I've heard some people suggest that we just get out of the animal control business and contract to like Harris County or Fort Bend. Um, is that even a possibility? And what would the ramifications be of that?
The, the shelter like Tom Ball contracts with Harris County. Harris County, according to Dr. White, is not doing that anymore because they cannot keep up with the demand. According, according to Dr. White, one of the issues was if we contract with Harris County, it may be a day or two before we get services. So that dog bite or the loose cat or something like that, you lose the intimacy of the services, the exceptional services we provide here. If you call right now, someone's gonna go to your home. If you, if you trap a skunk, someone will be there in a relatively quick amount of time. So when we contract out, we lose that, the, the, the control over the individual service that we provide to the citizens. Uh, and Harris County is not doing that anymore. They're out of that business. The city of Fullshire uses a kennel called Gold Star Kennel. And I think that's managed by the former animal control gentleman that used to work here many, many, many years ago, Mr. Worthy. Or Worthy, I believe. So those are options. Uh, but, uh, again, it just depends on the volume and then you let them make those decisions for adoption. Right now we're adopting out as fast as we can to all these five oh one C threes. And I do not know what the other facilities would do for that.
So let me ask you another question. Another thing I keep hearing is that we should turn into during our own adoptions. What's all, what are the regulations around that? What would we have to do? And add in order to adopt?
Well, an example would be, uh, I know don't quote me, but I know at Rosenberg, they, they contract with different vets in the community. So according to the chief of police over there, the vet bills alone at Rosenberg are a hundred thousand dollars a year. So any animal that comes in gets treated and they rotate it similar to what we do for our wreckers for car accidents. They rotate the work and then our staff that we, we do this, we do all this with two people. Right? And they have a director, an assist, forgive me, an assistant director and about six or seven employees for that kennel. So we're adding a lot of staffing and care around the clock. So the, the volunteers, the volunteers are great, but every kennel that I've visited, they're great for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. And then they start dwindling because they have other commitments and things like that. So then it, it, it creates a, a stress on the kennel. So, uh, Sugarland, for example, started with a bunch of volunteers and then it narrowed. And now they only have three or four volunteers that are essential to the operation now. Uh, because they have to have them because they have so many different aspects to the kennel and the adoption and things like that. So I know you have to have the vets on staff. You have to alter the animal, things like that. But you know, I, I'm not, I'm not the subject matter expert. I've just gone and, and viewed these, these and they're, 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 they're well-run facilities. But when they say Rosenberg says no kill kennel, that's for the adoptable pets, right? So some of them come in injured or extremely sick. And the euthan- the euthanasia still happens at those facilities. So the no kill is kind of just for the adoptable animals.
You know, we have got a couple more questions for you, sir. Um, so you talked about, we got our first volunteer on Saturday. Can you tell all of us how to get that information out into the community so that people can register or ask for background checks or whatever we need to do to get volunteers?
We're gonna visit with, during the advisory committee. We had a lady that called in and she walked a couple of the pets and we, we didn't have that many. So it was easy to watch her because we just can't have volunteers come in and get a dog bite or a, a cat scratch, things like that. So that'll be one of the topics for the advisory board to develop. Uh, I've been in communication with the assistant superintendent at the school district as well to go through the Miller Career Center to get the kids involved that are going through the vet tech program at K D I S D. So they can come in and volunteer and get their hours at our kennel. Positive, uh, and they were very, very, uh, we've had a couple of kids come in, uh, as police, they want to be police officers as internships. So if we can get K D I S D involved, that's, that's a fresh group of kids every junior and senior year that can come in and help with the kennel. And it's a way for them to give back to the community. And they can get their hours that they need to graduate and things like that. It kind of gives them a different perspective of, of how we, how we operate, what it takes to run a kennel, things like that.
Awesome. So a couple of questions about our adoption program. I just got the numbers. I've been looking at them all week from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. I do not have twenty twenty, but the numbers from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen show that our adoption rate was zero. So I, a lot of us are just concerned with what, what do we have in place and how are we getting this information out?
So, so we just, for us, we just need to do a better job of advertising what we send out, right? The adoption rates and those documents were on our PowerPoint, but we send them out to five oh one C threes and things like that. So again, they go to different locations and things like that. So we're having to pool together resources. I mean, uh, the kennel staff hasn't had a day off since Christmas, right? So, uh, because it's around the clock operation, the, the, the part-time employee is a very, very big help. So uh, we will get, I'll get those numbers to you so you can see them where they actually go. So for that one good story, I told you, we have hundreds of them. It's not just that one. And that, that was provided by, by animals alike to us. That wasn't something that we solicited. They, 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 they saw it on Facebook. And they know how good a job we do to put it together for us.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Chief?
Yes, yes, sir.
How much more burden would it put on dispatcher if we took the number, animal control number and had all phone calls go through dispatch? Would our dispatch be able to handle that?
If you call right now, dispatch gets the call.
Okay, twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven.
One, twenty-four seven? I mean, it would just be an add-on and we'd issue the, because that's what happens now. So before, you know, we, we, we've actually increased a lot of the purchasing. So we've modernized a lot of things. One of the things I forgot to mention was now David and Spencer have a computer, onboard computer in their truck. Because it, it's more modern. So he gets a call for service if, uh, if, if he gets a call for service on State Street, it, through dispatch, it automatically i- issues you a number.
And the reason, the reason I ask is once again, I come back to this oversight.
Right.
And, uh, I want to make sure that there are records of the phone calls coming in and not directly to a cell phone.
Right.
Um, so that, I mean, that's something I really want to see. I mean, like the other day, I know a resident was trying to get a skunk picked up.
Correct.
And I know it took a while. They tried multiple times to reach out to him, but that I think that would probably be, that would be another incident where we could solve it by going through dispatch.
Right. We almost already do, council members. So everything, so if you call right now, there's a a dead possum on State Street. Right? He goes in and a, and a call for services generated and it's documented. And he'll go in and do a very one, a simple sentence. A possum was picked up on State Street. Those are the kinds of things that are already generated through our computer system. So I, I, I don't think it would be that much more, more work. We're in the process of hiring a call taker for the P D, uh, that's already been budgeted, uh, in, in the past through a couple of budgets ago. So we're, we're working on, on, uh, just refining that and having the access. Cause for us, you know, the, we, we work as a team and we're sort of service oriented here. So we want to make sure that whoever's calling, uh, is, is getting the right information and we're sending the right personnel to that event.
You know, would it be possible for us to maybe get a monthly update on things that are happening, the numbers, adoption rates, things like that?
David already provides one to the mayor's office monthly. Uh, and that, that'll be, that can be disseminated through the mayor's office or the city secretary.
That would be great.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to item number five, which is comments from the public.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion if I may. I'd like to sus- suspend the rule for the number of people that can speak during public comments. Make it unlimited.
It's a timeframe.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
They would have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Can we, time frame of three minutes?
Janet?
Janet?
I'm sorry, what?
Can we keep the timeframe of three minutes?
Yes, I only did the, the rule that dealt with the number of speakers.
I think we have, Art, is that right? Do we have to keep the timeframe?
Yes, that's fine because the motion did not include changing the timeframe. It only includes just the, just the number of speakers. Then you, you will have the same timeframe, the three minutes.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? Is there any other discussion? Not, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. I would like to remind everybody in the audience, audience that you do have three minutes to speak. And you are to, uh, please state your name and your address when you speak. And anyone wishing to speak, star nine to raise your hand. And Ms. McGruder, the city secretary will let you in. And whatever the order comes up. Anyone wishing to speak, go ahead and press star nine.
At this time, I T is promoting Sean Fitzsimmons.
Yep. Can y'all hear me? Okay.
I do show you on the line.
Okay, can, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you. So my name is, my name's Sean Fitzsimmons and, uh, my address is two seven five zero seven Pinkstone Court. I do not actually live within the city limits of Katy, but I can see it from here. I live about a quarter mile away from the border. You know, this, first off, I, I want to address the just extremely disappointing presentation from the police chief. You know, this basically, you know, was a him tooting his horn, um, you know, tooting the horn of the city, not addressing any of the concerns that those of us in the community have. And again, while I don't live within city of Katy borders, I have a dog that's gotten out a couple of times. And what's gonna happen if that dog who we rescued from a, a day away from being euthanized, by the way, ends up inside of city limits and y'all are just too lazy to scan for the chip? Or take a look at maybe the tag that's on her and try and reach out to us as, as her owners? On top of just this extremely disappointing, uh, presentation from the police chief, the lack of empathy from I would say pretty much all of the council members, save for council member Robertson. Um, it's just kind of shocking, but you know, sadly, I, I mean, this disappoints me to say, I'm not super surprised at it. You know, no empathy, no holding anybody accountable for what was done. I mean, this stuff's on video. So you know, this isn't hearsay. This isn't some of us from the community, you know, making something up. You have a city employee that was advocating for the murder of pets, advocating for throwing away animal bodies that, you know, is someone's beloved pet more than likely in dumpsters aligned with the days that that dumpster would be emptied. Katy has to decide, do you really care about the lives of pets of the people that live within your city borders or those around you or not? Do you care about the humane treatment of animals, whether they're pets or wild animals or not? The answer that I've gotten right now is not, you know, it doesn't seem that you care. You know, Dusty was just real concerned about the safety of the employees, not how they're conducting themselves. Uh, council member Harris just tooted the horns, uh, of the city and of this, you know, plan. We want action. I want to see that city employee fired. That was advocating for the killing of animals for the mistreatment of those bodies. And again, this is on video, so this isn't hearsay. I wish I could vote in Katy because none of you, save for council member Robertson, would get my vote or my support. Some of you are my friends. Some of you are people I've worked with as a mud director in Firethorn. And to say I'm disappointed in you is just grossly understated. You should all be extremely ashamed of yourselves. I know I am ashamed of you.
Sean, thank you for observing the record time. At this time, we will promote the next public commenter unless there's any response. We are now promoting Lynn.
Hello?
Hi Lynn, I can hear you. Can you please state your name and address?
Hi, uh, my name is Lynn Sullivan. I live at two nine zero one Hackberry Lane in Katy, seven seven four nine three. Uh, I have been a Katy resident for the last thirty-five years. So thank you for letting me speak in front of you tonight. Animals are a really big part of my family. And I'm here to offer my help as this, to the city, to making lasting improvements on animal control. We want to make sure we have a sensible and educated approach to tackle the issue at hand. With this goal in mind, several Katy residents and I have formed No Kill Katy with the mission to put the true meaning of euthanasia back into the dictionary. Euthanasia means mercy killing of animals that are actively dying or having no chance of regaining good quality of life despite comprehensive veterinary care. As the representative of our group, I would like to further discuss your concerns and those from the community. Many of whom have been very open to learning more about the success of other true sustainable no-kill shelters. In less than two weeks, our page has over six hundred followers with posts reached more than eleven thousand people. We've also lined up different nonprofits and interest groups to help us. The best way to go about this is to work together, whether we are animal supporters or not. Because at the end of the day, we all want fewer roaming dogs and cats in our community. It's good that Katy has more experienced allies ready to help us achieve this goal. Again, I want to assure you, we have, that we want to have a sensible and educated approach to tackle the issues. Please get to know us and see who we are. No Kill Katy just wants to help with solutions that are effective, long-lasting for generations to come. And on my closing note, I just want to say I love the city of Katy. I've loved growing up here and I'm proud to be a part of this community. We've all seen what can be accomplished when we as a city really come together. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam.
All right. At this time, we will promote the next speaker. Ellen, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Ellen Schutz. I live at eighty-six fourteen Middle Downs Drive in Dallas, Texas. And I have sent you a list of questions. However, before I start, what I would like to say is this meeting should have been about transparency. There was no backup documentation of what you planned to present on the agenda. We never saw any kind of report from, uh, Chief Diaz. And we heard no mention about any of the animal cruelty that brought all of this to beginning. Um, I would like to understand because I, I have to tell you, when I saw the video of that poor feral cat being killed and suffering for three hours, I suffered. And I'm here, even though I'm not a citizen of Katy, I'm here because I want you people to be. And I'm here, even though I'm not a citizen of Katy, I'm here because I want you people to be accountable for the animal lives and the animals that can't speak for themselves. I want you to explain why they weren't heard. I want you to explain why these things are happening. I submitted a list of questions that I heard flat-out lies about from Chief Diaz today, as far as the rescues that you have, you have asked to be affiliated with your shelter, that's a lie. I know, because I volunteer with some of those shelters. So I know with some of those rescues, so I know for a fact, you have not reached out to those, those rescues. I know for a fact that you're killing animals while they're still on the truck, so that they don't have to be accounted for. I know for a fact that animals are being killed when you have empty kennels. You need to be accountable. David Brown needs to be fired. And you know what? None of this is going to go away until there is justice for those animals that couldn't speak for themselves. I promise you, I'm not going away, and none are, none of the other allies that I speak for are going away. That's all I have to say right now, because I can't go through each of the questions, there's not enough time. But I will make sure that those questions are answered. That's a promise. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for speaking. I would like to say that anyone who has submitted any comments or questions in advance, all of those emails and lists of questions and statements will be provided and have been provided to the council, but they will also be provided to the advisory committee for their review. At this time, we will now promote Dimitra.
Hi.
Hi Dimitra, if you could state your name and address.
Sure, my name is Dimitra Stefanoni, and I'm actually not even in Texas. I am at three thirteen Joppa, three thirteen Patterson Road, Joppa, Maryland. I actually, for four years now, I've been networking Texas dogs and cats. I did not realize that there are stray dogs and cats that, that roam the streets anywhere, because we here don't have those issues. So as sympathetic as I was, I tried, I started, I started networking cats and dogs from Texas to find outcomes. Little did I know, fast forward four years later, Harris County has five Facebook pages. I started a page with a couple other people, Mariana Frostburg as well. We started the page because a lot of the animals did not have a footprint, and they were disappearing off email, and we had no idea. When I first started networking, Harris County was killing a lot of dogs and cats, a ton. Harris County is successful because of the networkers and volunteers that work countless days, times during the day, and follow the emails religiously, take time to go take videos. We bring those rescues in there and have them, send them the paperwork to get approved to pull. We are the reason why Harris County is so successful. So I wanted to come on and speak tonight, because I think that it can happen at any shelter. There's volunteers willing to take videos and pictures and network. We have so many rescues that we work with. I bring cats and dogs here to Maryland to rescue, other people, we send them to the Pacific Northwest, all to adopters who want to adopt. We are a vessel that should be utilized and are willing to help if there's transparency. So we can come in and actually help the, the, the problems. You know, the, I mean, a lot of us take, help street dogs, you know, and cats, and I think the volunteers are there and they're screaming for help. And by allowing a page to be created, like the one young lady said, and to post those dogs and cats on there will make your, your shelter so much more successful, and I think that, you know, you should get the help that's out there, that our people are willing. In a year, we have over eleven thousand followers, just on our page alone. There is other pages that have much more followers for Harris County. We get those dogs and cats out quick, and I want to see that happen here as well. And we're all, we're all here to help in any way that we can to make improvements. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, they will promote the next speaker. Janie, are you on?
I am on. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Janie Pearlman Richkar. I live at three ninety-one East Los清ness Boulevard in Irving. I don't live in Katy, but I went to law school in Houston, so I, I do consider myself a Houstonian. I, I am just at a loss. I, I think that tonight, the theme has been zero, zero priorities. I've heard over and over about roadkill and about how important it is to go pick up wildlife, while not hearing anything really of substance about how you're going to take care of the animals. Zero accountability, the videos speak for themselves. There was a blatant disregard of policies, of procedures, and yet nothing is being done by the individuals that do that. I specialize in employment law. I'm at a loss on why no action is being taken. I, zero transparency. The chief couldn't answer the question on why cats are being housed outdoors, because there's an ongoing investigation over Jasper. I'm, again, I'm at a loss. How can you not answer that question because of an ongoing investigation over a death of a cat? I'm, volunteering is not a new concept, everybody. It's not a new invigorating concept. Why we are, at, at, I'm, again, at a loss on why this isn't something that was thought, thought through before. I spend a significant amount of my time doing pro bono work to help animals and help rescues. Having volunteer coordinators, having people that are passionate in the shelter to help is not a new concept. I'm pleased that so many council members have been going to the shelter, but I wonder how many of you went to the shelter before all of this? How many of you have asked questions about the care of the animals, about the logging of the calls that are coming in? Why is it that nobody is asking about the accountability? Friends of friends, friends of the key leaders being those that are auditing and supervising is not acceptable as well. So I do appreciate councilmen willing to call Rosenberg and other locations in order to, to learn from them. Overall, thank you for raising this. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. But I, again, am at a loss over what I'm viewing as the theme being zero. And I urge you to take action, because like Ellen, this is not something that's going to go away. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, we will now promote Jamie Campbell. Jamie Campbell is no longer on the line.
You there?
Actually, yes, there you are.
I had unmute, sorry.
No, you're good. We can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I live at three three one five Burson Court in Katy, Texas. I am a member of the city limit. Let the community help. If we want to volunteer to help y'all, let us help y'all. I foster, I rescue, my daughter helps, she knows what to do. Let us help. There's no reason for these animals to be put down if they don't need it. Let us step up. Let the community step up. I don't need three minutes, I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
At this time, we will now promote Sarah. Sarah, are you on the line? I'll show IT has unmuted you. Sarah? You may have to unmute yourself if you'll press star nine. There. We will now move on to Debbie Wilson. Debbie, I show you've been promoted. It doesn't show that she has a microphone registered. We'll move on to Amber Savarino. If Sarah or Debbie would like to message me or call my line, they can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Amber, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Amber Savarino. I live at two seven nine two three Hendrix Park Drive. I am not a Katy resident. I live in Spring, Texas. I actually have my own five oh one C three dog rescue, and I'm super excited that y'all are finally allowing volunteers to come in and your collaboration with rescue groups. That's really the key to getting these dogs out alive. I can't express that enough. Touching back on, I know y'all said the shelter is short-staffed, and we understand that, so these volunteers are really the ones who we communicate with. And if a dog is about to be euthanized, they'll reach out to us, hey, do you have a foster? And we will do everything that we can to pull that dog. We send our dogs up to the Pacific Northwest, specifically Washington and Oregon. And it's amazing how many people want to adopt dogs, like they have waitlists. And just about every adopter that I talk to, they're like, please, like, you know, we want, we want to help in any way that we can. So there are adopters out there, there are rescue groups that want to help. So just, I just wanted to say, I guess the volunteers are really crucial for us seeing, you know, the shelter does email out the euthanasia list, but a lot of times, you know, we don't, we know that, again, shelter staff is short-staffed, so just, again, those volunteers are super crucial in, in helping getting those dogs out alive and for us as rescue groups. And again, someone else said it, I believe Dimitra, we want to help, we all want to work together. This is a partnership. I know people are upset, but working together is, is how we get these dogs out alive, and we, you know, no one wants, I hope, no one wants for these dogs to die. That's what we want, is just to get them out alive and to work together. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Amber. Mayor, at this time, we're going to try to promote Sarah. She's, we show that she is on her phone and her computer, and both have the microphone on, so we're going to try promoting her. Again, it's, it's, if you can hear her. Sarah?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. If you'll, your, your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Sarah McGlocklin. My dress is two four two zero six Camellia Ridge Way, Katy, Texas. I feel like a Katy, city of Katy resident, just because I can hear the band rehearsing at the stadium, and again, like what Mr. Sean Fitzgerald said about, Fitzman said about, if my animal got out, if my cat got out, it would most likely be picked up by City of Katy. Harris County doesn't come out here for lost cats, but see, Katy seems to be very aggressive about picking up cats. And that's why I feel kind of passionate about this. And what I wanted to say was, I tried reaching out to some friends of mine that are big in the animal rights community, and they just shut me down, because the reputation of the city of Katy Animal Control is horrific. None of them want to deal with this situation. None of them want to deal with City of Katy Animal Control. And I think that's true of a lot of the five oh one threes, or five oh one three Cs, that they tried to work with City of Katy Animal Control about adopting out, and they get the runaround, and they get the impression, rightfully so, that they're not interested in saving the lives of these animals. And I just, I wanted y'all to know what a horrible reputation City of Katy Animal Control has across Houston, Harris County, all the way to Kingwood. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm glad we were able to get you connected. At this time, we will try to get Debbie Wilson back on the line.
Debbie? Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you now.
All right, hold on, I think I need to put, okay, I guess I don't need you on speaker. Anyway, my name is Debbie Wilson. I live in Piney Point, Texas, which is surrounded by Houston at one one three one nine Coloma Lane. I have been helping dogs get out of primarily Harris County Animal Shelter for at least six years. I've, I'm actually one of their trained volunteers. I've been through their program. And formerly spent the majority of my time initially going in as a volunteer and helping citizens that came in to adopt animals, educating them, teaching them about heartworms, heartworm treatment, and how to properly care for a pet, and to set the animal up for success. And by that, I mean, teaching them about proper decompression from shelter stress, and the fact that they need to rest and feel safe, and how to go about that. And also then, after that, a week to two weeks later, how to properly introduce them to existing pets in their household on neutral ground. And I did that because it helps the animals not be returned for behavior issues. I would like to see Katy, I know that Officer Diaz, you kept commenting about how many animals were adopted, but my understanding is your facility actually doesn't allow adoptions, so maybe what you meant was animals were pulled by rescue groups. But that doesn't mean they're adopted. That just means they've left your facility, and that a rescue is taking the responsibility to then interview potential adopters and find them a suitable home where they can be happy. That's something that can, it is in your control. It doesn't need to be in your budget if you will utilize volunteers and Facebook pages or Instagram accounts that are already out there willing to help you. When I started going into Harris, eighty-five percent of the cats were euthanized. The dogs would have at least thirty dogs on the youth list every single night, and most didn't make it out. The only ones that made it were the dogs that got featured on a Facebook page, and at the time, there weren't enough Facebook pages with a following that actually worked with people that offered to help. Since then, I've probably helped well over maybe a hundred and fifty rescues, rescues come into Harris County and get approved. We're willing to help you, but you've got to help yourself first. Saying that you had a volunteer last Saturday is not nearly enough. You need to be good at communicating, and I may have been cut off, but anyway, we're here to help you, just reach out.
No, ma'am, you are not cut off. Thank you for taking the time. I'm sorry that we had to re-promote you, and we had issues in the beginning, but thank you and for what you do for the community. At this time, we're going to promote Betty.
Hi.
Hi, Betty, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Betty.
My name is Betty Winter and I live, I live at 1621 Avenue B and I'm a very proud citizen of Katy, the City of Katy. Okay, so what I'd like to say is that I am a City of Katy resident. I lived at Eva years and years ago and then moved away into outer city limits. And then I am back in town and I'm glad to be here so that I can be a part of what's going to take place at the Katy Animal Control. I'm also the admin for a successful Facebook page called Katy Texas Pet Foster Offers. I've worked hours and hours acquiring hundreds of fosters for many of the local rescues, some of which you've probably worked with at the City of Katy. That being said, I believe that the first answer to helping to win the trust and respect of the City of Katy residents and the larger Houston area is to hire a trusted, experienced, ready-on-day-one kennel manager. That person is the link between animal control, volunteers, rescues, and adoptions. It's a necessary piece to a happy solution. I happen to know someone who would be ready on day one, who has the success behind her and who is a a beast when it comes to working with animals. So that's my suggestion. I appreciate the platform that you've allowed in this meeting for us to be able to talk and I look forward to, to hopefully changes that will come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Betty.
Ms. Wender, if you would get with Chief Diaz and give him the name of the individual you're talking about, we would appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
At this time, we will now promote Erica.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Erica Seaton-Roth. I live at 1403 Misty Bend Drive in Katy and Pinoc Village. I'm going to try to keep this short, but I was on vacation when all these videos came out and so I got back and saw them and and was irate. I don't know how anyone could watch those videos and not have been caught up at night and cried. I mean, literally, I cried. I showed them to my husband, who is generally, you know, he's not as emotional about things and he was in complete disbelief. I mean, let's call it what it is, what you guys are unwilling to say and the fact that David murdered animals. You guys are not addressing the situation. People have been fired from their jobs for lesser things, much less things. And, and you guys are not taking any stand. I don't know if Chelsea still works there, but God bless her for what she did. I don't even know. I couldn't have even imagined being in her situation and having to record that and keep that quiet for that long in order to expose the disgusting stuff that was happening over, under your watch. This was under all of your watch. This was under the police department's watch. What we saw tonight was an absolute ridiculous presentation that addressed none of the concerns that the people who are listening to this now over hour-long Zoom call even, even have. There's no real actions that's being taken. I want to thank Rory for being the only person on the council who actually seems like he's concerned. I, to a certain extent, know Rory and, and Chris and I'm just absolutely appalled, Chris, honestly, that you haven't taken more of a stand on this from what I know about you. And you guys, quite frankly, should be ashamed of yourselves. You're not doing anything that the public is, is asking for you. You're not answering the big questions that we have. David needs to be fired. David needs to be in a lawsuit right now. And you guys are keeping his job and that's just absolutely ridiculous. I'll end with saying that putting stuff on a fancy website is not going to do much of anything. You guys need to have a social platform where people can share posts and reach a wider audience. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Erica. At this time, we will promote the next speaker, which is Mike Sadler.
Becky, can you hear me?
Hey, Mike, I can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Sadler, 2637 Carson Drive here in Katy. Katy citizen. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity that we had tonight and for your leadership on this as well as the council. Chief Diaz, I'd like to thank you and, and I appreciate the, the presentation you made. This is a step going forward. We're moving forward on it. There's an ongoing investigation. I understand that, that, that you cannot comment on that and I appreciate that. There has been a lot of discussion about the animal rescues. I appreciate that. I have a rescued dog myself. And I appreciate all that you've done and I think this is a good start. It does need to be a start. I'd like to, if there's any way I can possibly help volunteer for something, I will be more than happy to do that. I would like to voice my own opinion about speakers. If next time we have the motion being made for unlimited speakers, why don't we limit that to the citizens of Katy? Y'all have a nice night.
Thank you. We've also received a question on the chat. Jacob, if you'll go ahead and set the timer for me. How can we double the size of the Katy Animal Control Facility? Katy has doubled in size. The incoming tax revenue has more than doubled. And why can't we fund improvements needed? Call for volunteers, call for donations, et cetera. And the same gentleman, Jim, has also submitted, how can we get Katy Animal Control on Facebook page where photos of the dogs and cats picked up and currently being held at the shelter can be posted? People need to be able to log into a Facebook page and see photos of animals currently held there and what their status is. We've also received a number of comments on volunteering and I have distributed a message that if anyone did not raise their hand to speak publicly and did not have their question addressed, to send them a two info@cityofkaty.com. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? See, a couple are raised hands. At this time, I, you will promote Kara Bonin. Kara, I show you're unmuted. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Perfect. I can hear you too. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kara Bonin, 5409 East Fourth Street, 77493.
Go ahead, Kara.
Okay, I've been involved in animal rescue for over a decade. I've worked with David and Spencer before. They've been, been in my home. David helped me come up with a plan to help better the way that the City of Brookshire used to run their animal shelter, but when I worked with David, I knew that even at that time, he was not operating legally and by the way that the charter lays out, the way that the city operate animal control and the way that the state Health and Human Services state that animal control should be operated. And I was frustrated with being able to help the animals out of the Katy Animal Control facility because of the way that they wouldn't let people in, walk, see if there was an animal that they thought could be adopted through their organization. So I moved my interest to Brookshire. And through my efforts in Brookshire, Texas, I had pilots landing at the airport between Katy and Brookshire, picking up animals, flying them out of state to adopters and to other agencies. I had vans pull up to the Brookshire small animal clinic, fill it up and take animals to places like Maryland, Colorado, Oregon, Washington State. While I worked with the City of Brookshire, not a single animal was euthanized. And that's a goal that I believe we could accomplish here in Katy with just the right people in place. And I have little to no faith in Katy Animal Control as long as these people are still in place. The words that came out of Chief Diaz's mouth reiterate to myself that I shouldn't have much confidence in this community getting the animal shelter we deserve because just some of the ignorance that came out of your mouth tonight was astonishing. Doug Worthy has no business stepping foot in or around our animal shelter. I mean, he should be in prison. David should be in prison and anyone who condones their act, and I can't believe you even congratulated him. I mean, it's embarrassing. You are embarrassing this community. And I really hope that you take this opportunity to listen to the community and quit trying to put lipstick on this pig. And I'm done.
Thank you, Kara. At this time, we will now promote Andrea.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrea Spears. I live at 2209 Georgetown Street Town Park. Katy, I actually have lived here for 29 years and, you know, guys, I am kind of disappointed with what I've heard tonight. There's only a few positive things that I kind of felt that may happen, but only because of the community. Not because things are actually getting violated. You know, we've seen these videos. And it's, it's kind of astonishing that it's, you guys are acting like we haven't. So as a person who lives here in Katy, my question is, is if one of my animals get out and they happen to get in his hands, will my cat get euthanized on the truck? I'm, I'm not prepared for this. I thought I was, but emotionally, I'm terribly frustrated with how things are being handled. And I agree with a lot of people. If you want us to trust you guys and trust the process of change, you can't expect us to trust when you still allow these people in the building and allow them to still continue to do what they're doing. They're violating policies right underneath everyone's nose and everyone is turning a blind eye to it. And I just wish and I hope tonight, as anyone would, that you guys really think this over and ask yourself, are these the kind of people that we want pretty much representing Katy? And I'm not talking about you guys. I am talking about the officers of the animal control for Katy. You know, we have a bunch of people that are willing to step up and willing to help find homes. So let's change that and let's make adoptions available there at the site, you know? Why is that such a hard thing? Why can't people come in and look after so long to see if maybe that's a dog or a cat that they would be willing to love? I have several fosters and I plan to do it for the rest of my life. And I'll step up and help. So I'm just hoping that you guys will make a change and make us be proud of you because we want to be, we're proud Katy citizens. But really, change this for us so we can be true proud Katy citizens. And that's really all I have to say right now. And thank you guys for listening and thank you guys for bringing this meeting together because if not, we wouldn't be here. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Andrea. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? We do have another question that was submitted. Can we ask that all euthanasia stop until the advisory board is set up and running in place? This response from the community has shown that we have more than enough resources to make this happen. That was submitted by Sarah. Janie submitted an additional comment saying, has there been bond money requested? Kay is on the line and she will be promoted next. Yes, ma'am, I can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
All right, I'm Kay Sword. I live at 3234 Katy Hawkley Road in Katy, 77493. I listened to every comment that was made on this meeting. And I had already previously sent emails to all of the councilmen and the mayor so that they could know my comments. And in fact, I've been back and forth personally messaging with Rory. I just want to say that I rarely have heard or seen as many punitive comments about any subject. So I'm very surprised by that. I do think our shelter policy and our charter are lagging behind and need to be updated. I think there's work ongoing about that, but I think that needs to be the work of an advisory committee. I was very happy to hear that we would have several, seven citizens on that advisory committee. I do not want to be part of that. I, I advocate for humans. And while I have a rescue animal myself and other animals and love them, I am not particularly advocate of animal rights. I do think though, that dogs, trapped dogs and cats should be scanned for microchips, tattoos and ear clippings. And I think there's been some things that have gone wrong in the past that I doubt will go wrong in the future. I think that we should change to a no kill shelter, shelter, if that's even financially feasible. Certainly it'd be better PR for the city. And I think every animal control officer should be at least basic certified and that some of them should be advanced certified. I don't know that I think we need to hire a whole lot more staff for a few animals, but my greatest opinion is this. I want this to be the decision of the city residents. And I don't want my taxes increased so that we can care of animals that are not unwanted. I'm not naive enough to think that increased shelter days per animals, increased worker hours and increased veterinary bills will not cost us more money. I'm told that this can be handled by federal grants. Well, that's taking money out of one pocket and putting and taking it out of the other pocket too. But at least if it's handled with federal grants or funds, we will know that some of that money came back to Katy. Thank you very much for listening to what I have to say. And thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for having this forum for us to have discussion.
Thank you, Karen.
Mayor, we've also received a question about where will you post the chat log for the public to see? We don't post our chat logs, but you are welcome to request it under the Texas Public Information Act by sending a written request to City Hall. You can hand deliver it. You can email it to my office, o r r@cityofkaty.com. And I have notified IT to make sure they capture the chat session for the workshop for anyone who'd like to submit that request. At this time, Mayor, I do not see any further comments. We do have one more question in the chat from Sarah. Are we going to get any response from the mayor and/or council members to our calls and questions?
Let's give just another minute or two for anybody that may be having trouble getting on, Becky.
Okay. Uh, Art, if we have someone who's already previously spoke under public comments, raise their hand to speak again.
No.
Because they've already expended the time allowed under the rules of procedure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any, um, public comments that were emailed?
Uh, we did have, um, several long lists of questions that were emailed, and at this time, uh, I don't remember who I said it to in the response. All of those have been forwarded to council for consideration, and I am compiling them so that when the advisory committee meets, they will also be provided all of those comments and questions, uh, for consideration.
Okay, if we don't have anyone else wishing to speak, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, we do. Uh, Cindy is now on the line and has raised her hand.
Okay.
He will unmute her at this time. Cindy, I show you're unmuted, are you there?
Yes, um, I know I spoke last time. I just wanted to remind everyone that I am available to come in and video these animals, to post them on Fort Bend County Shelter Animals, so that we can get them out to networkers. I would love to volunteer at the shelter. I will be glad to help take care of the animals there. And, again, I'm just here to remind you that I would really like to come in and video these animals so we can promote them. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, and I'm sure somebody will be in touch with you about that. Okay, if we have no more comments, or I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Harrison, a second by Dusty Thiel. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same stand. Motion carries. It is eight twenty-three, and we will adjourn the meeting.